Hello guys and welcome back to my time in Portia episode 3. So last episode, obviously, we completed a couple of quests. We spent some more time in the like, the very beginning ruins. And yeah, we're just sort of like getting used to things, meeting some people. And you know, we can only do one quest a day, unfortunately. So yeah, I think we'll go and see if we can go get another easy quest. Let's see what's going on. Oh, that's a cute kitty. I mean, I can't build a fishing rod yet, so I'm staying away. Pinky stray cat. Oh. Maybe if we get good enough friends, we can like adopt it. Let's just chat with everyone. Let's see what is going on. Oh, oh, that's because it's the weekend, isn't it? Because we had that letter that said. Right. Maybe let's. Hmm. Just thinking like what we should do for today. Do you? Right. Hi, I heard you were at the fireside meeting. So how long are you gonna stay here? The life here in Portia is so cozy. Feel it with your heart. I'm pretty sure you'll love it. Okay. This seemed pretty awesome. Let's just get some more materials. So yeah, we won't unfortunately be able to get any quests until the days are over. It's that. Yeah. We have a little bit of inventory space to collect some things. Just get materials where we can. There is a person we can meet over here. Sup Emily? The farmer. Sure, what's up? Oh, that's nice of her. So. We've learnt the recipe. So maybe if we go. Here or here. So we need a wooden board from the cutter, which is what we're trying to build at the moment, I think. Yeah. We need to make some bricks. Okay, can I cancel this? Because I need to make some of these. No, well, there's not many left. Uh, let's get some more wood for our. Um, I want to say furnace, but it's not just like a, or is it a furnace? Who knows? I'm so indecisive. Right. And we need to get some animal feces, so let's try and find some of that. Or maybe we should make a trap. Maybe that's how we get it. Let's see what we need for a trap. I feel like I saw it. There it is. Abandoned ruins. Oof. Is that? Okay, well, then let's head to the ruins. Actually, no, let's clear the inventory first. Oh my god, I need more space. Why can't I just? Oh no. That's all this? I mean, that's like enough. Space. Every time I look over, I'm like, oh, we have that in there. Yes. Oh, and some more rock. Okay. All right, let's head to the ruins. We need to get some springs. Hopefully luck is with us today. Fingers crossed. Sup Arlo? That is very good of you. So we want to build our friendships with as many people as possible, obviously. We want some good friendos. Right. Is there anything like behind? Because I normally do go backwards, but. I don't know. There is nothing but the, oh god. This poor girl, she would have like hit her head like so many times. Okay. Let's dig. Oh, it helps when you're in the right thing. Pro tip there again, you know? I know that's why you guys come to these videos. It's for my pro tips and expertise. Have a straight way. Oh. Got a new relic. Great. Not saying that's not what we want, but it's not really what we want. Come on spring or cute piece of furniture we can put in our house. I'm also out for that. Is it a spring? An eyeglass. Right. Maybe it's like, oh god, already found it. What is this? Oh, that's her. Okay. Come on springs. Oh, there's like, oh, there's one. There's a couple. Okay. Let's walk backwards a bit. But we may be running out, it seems. Just relics all over the place. But we did level up. So. What do we want to do? Because this has actually been pretty good. I mean, like if we can't find any springs, we will have to probably fight the like cute little llamas. Or hmm, actually gonna go with this. Because it increases our experience, so we'll get more points in the long run. So. Yeah. There is like none. So I might just mine a little bit then. And just double check. There is none about. Oh, oh, oh. Let's just have a good. Good old mine. I need to save our data disc for when a small engine mods. So is that like a complete relic? That is pretty cool. Yeah, I definitely feel like we're coming to the end of like, I'm pretty sure it changes like what like floor you're on. Um. Like weekly or monthly or whatever, like whenever you have to like repay. But maybe let's go to like a different part. Oh, there's one. But I think this will be our last one of the day. Still no springs, unfortunately. The thinking can. Okay. So definitely going to be needing to make some more chests. Because we do not have enough inventory space. How do I for 40 gold? That is so tempting. But. Not right now. Just because that'd be like literally all of our money. And I don't have enough space, otherwise I'd go open up that chest there. Oh yeah, and I can run. Which I literally always forget about. Right. So I don't think I have. Anything. That. Let's just click on it all. Um. Any like complete ones apart from maybe the. Um, let's make two. Of the, the engine that's complete, but I don't really know. Go. Let's place. Got this one here. Nice. So I want all of my relics to go in there. Is that a relic? No, it's just general loot. So I'm guessing we can sell that. Um. Good. Now let's pop these away. Damn it. Still not enough space. Oh no, that. Okay, and. I don't know why we made so much glass. Was I making it for someone or? Like I literally cannot remember. But let's get those bricks. Um, on the go. Because they're all we need for that saw thingamajig. I really want to like improve our house. What's this? Oh, that gives us more stamina. That gives us more stamina. What is this? We don't have a helper. I guess maybe like if that's when you get married or something. Maybe, I don't know. Oh, I might grab the. Engine. Oh, we have post. Um, oh my god, we can finish the thingamajig. Not enough. Oh my god, we need one more. It's gonna take so long. Um. I'm gonna grab the engine. But I don't think you need it on you, do you? Like it, that's so weird. Oh, from City Hall, we have an important announcement tonight at tonight's fireside meeting at Peach Plaza. Please try to make it at seven sharp. Okay, I will try to remember. But no promises. Oh, let's go speak to the kitty cat. And you? That, that's nice. Um. We want to be going to the research place. To see if we've got like a complete thing. The engine, it didn't say like one of wherever. Oh my god, you're joking me. Fine, let's go speak to someone then. This is so pretty, like the game. I just love it. Isn't that part of being a mom though? Like worrying all the time? Yay. Alright, let's go over to the machine. So I can't. Do. Anything. Which sucks. Okay. I mean, can I do anything with the data discs? Oh, we also have to bring them with me. Ah, okay. Now I know. You do have to bring stuff with you. Let's have a chat. Yeah, we already had this. But let's go back into the mines. Oh, it's saying we need to meet this guy, even though we've met him before. Thank you, but again. Not needed. I was hoping it'd give us like another relationship boost. But that's fine. Back to the ruins we go. Because it is still the weekend. Yes, I'm pretty sure. If we do this, 20 gold to switch to another area. Okay, it's only 20, so it's not too bad. Right. Ooh. There we go. Found one already. Give us a spring. Nope. Gotta try and remember seven o'clock, seven o'clock. Probably want to leave by like half six the mine, so we can get to the meeting. Because there is the important announcement. Oh, we got a fan. It's pretty cool. Still kind of like there's not that many places. An eyeglass. Great. I'm gonna see who I can sell them to because. Seem like they're kind of common? What's? Yeah, there definitely don't seem to be too many here. I said it already. There definitely doesn't seem to be that much here. And I, oh no, there is. I'm just being very pessimistic lately. Oh. Come on springs. Because I really wanted to kill them, very cute, cute animals. Nope. But they do got loads of data discs, it seems. Come on spring. That one was easy to get. Oh my god, I just can't quite. Reach that one. There we go. Like this has got to be a good one. Nope, just another relic piece. Hooray. Come on. I want that spring. Come on. Oh. Oh my god, that's for one that we already have. That's good. That's really good. Right, it's four o'clock. Man, I could always try running to the um. Center because I must have like five data discs on me now. Oh, and I'm pretty sure we have one. For that as well. Oh, this is very exciting. Yeah, I think I'm gonna run. To the um. This is one real close by. No, yeah, I'm gonna run to the um. Place because I'm pretty sure we have more than um. Yeah, we have nine data discs, so let's go see what we can unlock. Run, run, run. Yeah, I think I'm gonna want to increase that soon. Hopefully it does not close by the time I get there. Think it's crossed. Perfect. Oh. She's, she's normally there. So. Oh no, we have two. So I don't know if it's worth like maybe selling the piece that we have. But this. We have everything. Can we cover? Cool. And so that unlocks these. We have an arm. All things zero. I'm confused. I can't believe we actually made something. That's so cool. Why aren't they in here? I mean. Whatever. Let's see. It can be placed in a museum. Okay, are we gonna open a museum? Is there a museum here? Right, let's head over. Oh my god, we haven't got long before it starts. Oh my god, it's died. Oh my god, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god. Quickly! Oh, now I. Oh, now I finally get to fish there.
Finally, we have a new builder in town this week who lives in the old workshop outside the city gate. Let's all give a warm welcome.
I don't feel like that was a warm welcome at all. Gonna be honest with you guys. But, oh, that's cool, and transportation system should make. Getting around a bit easier.
Hey, welcome to Portia. I'm pretty much the only doctor around here, so come see me when you need to heal up or buy health items. Here, have these as a welcome gift.
Oh, that's nice of you.
The herbal mixture is a great thing. It's easy to make and it works well. Always make enough of them to be safe.
Okay. We're making progress on our list of people to meet, which is really good. Um, it's this one. So. I'm gonna keep it for now. This. And that. Yeah, that's all of the relics. And then let's pop these. There we go. And now. We can. Yay! Right, let's pop that. And that. So we need to make some of these? I think. What is it that we need? Um. Yes, we need wooden boards. So. Let's make the max we can, which is three. And then let's go to sleep. Oh no, let's place this. I mean, I don't love it, but. Just pop it in. The corner there. Tighten it on. Does it help with anything? Yes, more health, which is great. Right, I wish we could like, I'm sure we can redo it over time. But with that, guys, I am gonna leave it there. So if you've enjoyed today's episode, make sure you leave a thumbs up. Leave any comments or tips below. Subscribe if you're not already, but I'll catch you guys next time. Bye!